At six o'clock, I'm going to call the meeting of board of selectmen from Town Freetown to order March 25th, 6:00 PM. I'm going to begin this meeting with a couple of quick statements from me. One, I have had numerous phone calls from people. I think we've had probably the snowiest winter we can remember in some period of time, above-average levels of snow, and they were rather frequent. The boards indicated during our debrief on storm Nemo that town personnel overall did an extremely great job of moving us through that disaster successfully. And additionally, town personnel have met the challenges of the next three weeks, did meet the challenges of the next three weekly snow events, even with the few resources that we're able to allocate. But it's important, and I wish you were here, it's important to recognize that Chuck Matfonger, our highway supervisor or surveyor, he has just been so professional, so comprehensive in his response to our storms this winter. He and his employees and his crews were able to keep our streets safe and passable, and we truly were the envy of surrounding communities. In fact, the last conversation I had with a gentleman was just last week. He said, "I drive Holland Road all the time. I come through Lakeville, and when I get to Freetown, I feel safe because the roads are clear." So I really do want to applaud Chuck for his superior work, for his crew, for his whole team, and for all of their hard work, especially during Nemo, but even in subsequent storms. A lot of people have called to express their appreciation. I felt it was appropriate to convey that appreciation to you as well this evening. And my next statement concerns what I think some of you are here for tonight. As you're aware, the town is currently investigating a personnel matter, and that matter involves the town's building inspector. And while I do appreciate the significant public interest in this matter, I also recognize the need for the town to properly manage this investigation for the general public benefit. For that reason, and in the interest of maintaining order and decorum at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, as chairman, I will not be recognizing any further statements regarding this matter during the public comment period. Instead, I request that all statements be submitted in writing to our office by March 29th, and they can come in afternoon, even though the town hall closes at noon. Jackie Brown will be there until 5:00. In this manner, the statements can be properly reviewed. The Board of Selectmen may proceed in addressing the various needs of the town. I certainly do appreciate your understanding and cooperation in this regard, as again, this is a personnel matter. It is not a matter that is deliberated in a public discussion method, rather, it has to be handled appropriately and through proper channels. We have implemented a process. The investigation is underway, and I do have the prerogative to disallow any further public discussion on the matter of Mr. Bourgeois. This is just not the proper form. So, and again, any further comments can be submitted to us in writing. We will submit them to our investigator. You may be contacted by that investigator directly, and we'll continue to move this forward. I think that's the most productive manner to do this and to continue moving the business of the town forward. Does the board want that right?
Yep. Through the chair.
Yes.
Can you ask if anybody's taping the meeting, and if they are?
I should have asked that.
Can they state their name?
I should have asked that up front. Is anyone taping tonight's meeting?
Paul Shadix looking.
Joe, you taping the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Joe Montour. Anyone else? Other than our videographer for cable? All right, thank you. So our first order of business tonight is... Oh, is there any other public discussion on a matter not related to the one I just No other public discussion? We have before us a public hearing on ISP's amendment to its license, and we have one that is always here. We're really having a hard time hearing you. I'll read my statement once again. Thank you. All right. Can you hear me now? Yes. All right. I'm going to read my statement one more time. I apologize if you were unable to hear. As you're aware, the Town of Freetown is currently investigating a personnel matter involving the town's building inspector. And while I do appreciate the significant public interest in this matter, I also recognize the need for the town to properly manage this investigation for the general public benefit. For that reason, and in the interest of maintaining order and decorum at the Board of Selectmen's meetings, as chair, I will not be recognizing any further statements regarding this matter during the public comment period. Instead, I request that all statements be submitted to the board in writing, no later than Friday, March 29th. They can be submitted afternoon, although noon is the closing time generally. In this manner, statements can be properly reviewed, and the Board of Selectmen may proceed in addressing the various needs of the town. I appreciate your understanding and cooperation in this regard. Again, I reiterate, this is a personnel matter. It needs to be handled appropriately and not through public discussion. I do have prerogative as chair to disallow further discussion of Mr. Bourgeois during public discussion. However, I am opening the floor right now to anyone else who has public discussion on another topic, if there is anything else to discuss. Hearing none, then we're going to proceed with the public hearing by ISP.
My pleasure.
I would, if you would mind. Thank you.
Well, hi, my name is Eric Moore. I'm the environmental manager at ISP Freetown Fine Chemicals. And the reason why we're coming to you today is we want to amend our land license that we have in the facility. Our land license is approved from the town that allows us to store flammable and combustible materials on our site. And to give you a little bit of a background, the original flammable storage license was issued in 1985 when Polaroid still owned the site. The land license goes with the property and not with the owner. So when ISP bought this site in 1998, we acquired this land license.
If I could just interrupt you for a moment. We probably shouldn't have gone through these cards. You have a number of the butters, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Do we have Oliver Cuto here? CSX Transportation. Dolores Dias. Do we have Frederick LaPointe? Do we have Edward Lavoy? Paolo Gavella? Andre Marois? Daniel Matthew? Joseph Medeiris? Jeffrey Mills? GR Northeast Departments Associated LLC? Natalie Mistaturradado Trust? Daniel Olivera? Douglas Rodericks? Antonio Sarmiento? Mark Tavaras? Tom Thoreau? Howard and Michael Brennan?
Yes. Got me a deal.
Nice to see you. And you are?
Daniel O'Connell. I got the letter.
You did? I just don't have the receipt, or I didn't read it out, but you're in butter.
I'm in.
Okay, well, thank you. So we have two of butters.
Can you state your address, please?
Two to nine South Main Street.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's quite all right.
Might be easier for you, too.
Sure.
Okay, so as I was mentioning, when this land license was issued to Polaroid at the time, it allowed the facility to store 400,000 gallons of Class 1A flammable materials on site. The Class 1A flammable materials are the most flammable materials in six different categories of flammable materials. So why we're coming to you today is we would like to amend this license for a couple of reasons. First reason is that we'd like to install two new tanks on our property, which have one is a Class 2 material, another one is combustible, Class 2A material that we would like to install on site. And secondly, at the request of the fire marshal, they would like our land license to break down the quantities of all these different categories. The categories of Class 1A, 1B, 1C, and then the combustible materials are Class 2, 3A, and 3B.
Are you speaking into the microphone?
I'm sorry. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay.
Not really.
You still can? Is this microphone working?
Is it on?
Okay.
It is on.
So again, the original land license allowed us to store 400,000 gallons of Class 1A materials. We are asking for an amendment to this license to clarify that into the different categories of flammable materials. We are asking for a Class 1A limit of 10,000 gallons, Class 1B flammable limit of 430,000 gallons, Class 1C flammable of 60,000 gallons, and then for the combustible materials, 8, 5,000 gallons of Class 2 combustibles, 60,000 gallons of Class 3A combustibles, 450,000 gallons of Class 8 combustible materials. I know a lot of people aren't familiar with those different sort of categories. Class 1A flammable, currently, we have none of those on site, even though we have this permit for the land license that allowed us to store 400,000 gallons, we actually didn't have any 1As. The old land license wasn't clear. It was silent on all the other different categories. So Class 1B materials are things that you're familiar with, like acetone, ethanol, gasoline, rubbing alcohol, things of those ages. That's Class 1B. Class 1C flammable are things like mineral spirits and turpentine. It's different categories, they have lower flammability. And then combustible materials, a Class 2 combustible is something like diesel fuel or fuel oil. Class 3A combustibles are mineral oil, oil-based paints. And Class 3B combustibles are things like ethylene glycol and litsy or glycerin. Now, these are materials that we have always had on site, you know, and the chief, the fire chief, is well aware of these materials. We all shall have permits for all of these on site. The trick is the land license was silent on these other sorts of combustibles. So at the request of the fire marshal, he wants that to be clarified in our land license. So the only increase we're really looking at is just install these two new tanks of combustible material. One is 22,000 gallon tank, and another is a 10,000 gallon tank. So to do that, for the fire marshal to approve that, we have to amend our land license, and that's why we're coming to you today.
Chief Sylvia, could you address this? Thank you. You get to use a mic. Nobody can hear. Except for me.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, good.
This is basically, we just amended the license because they installed two new vertical tanks at ISP. The land use license actually was back in '64, back when it was Thompson Chemical. And then it was re-admitted again when Owen took over in the '70s. It's just part of the process. We're trying to get things in line with more modern terminology. The old terminology of Class A inflamables is old and outdated, and the marshal wants it improved down by the NFPA codes. And that's all we're doing here.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
How often do you visit the site?
The question, Mike, to the chief was, how often does he visit his site?
I go, we go, there's an apartment yearly, but the deputy goes there more frequently on inspections. And how long will he spend the rest of his working career there now?
And you're comfortable with everything?
I am, yes.
Are there state inspections as well?
Correct.
And they happen annually?
They happen annually for the big tanks, not only for the marshal's office and the fire pond, but also when a third party comes and inspects their facility also.
Excellent.
And we brought in the whole fire department before. We try to do that. People can't hear me at least once a year.
Okay.
Okay, is it on now? Okay, maybe that was a problem. Okay, when we bring in the whole fire department, we bring them in one night, we tour the whole facility, we go through all various aspects of the plan, show them where we store the materials, and we'll probably be doing that again in a few months. We talked about doing that one a little bit longer. We'll do that. We also reach out to the Fall River Fire Department because we sit on the line between two towns, and we'll do the same thing with them as well. So we have very close relationships with them. And again, as the chief said, this is really just clarifying the old land license, the current standards, the current terminology of the different...
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, and there are butters present, do you have questions that you would like to ask?
Sure. Sounds like you're increasing...
I'm sorry, could you state your name for the record?
How often is a butter? It sounds like you're increasing the capacity from 400,000 to, I think it's 230, with an additional 10, 20,000 down the chain?
Yeah. The old land license said that we could store 400,000 gallons of Class 1As, which is the most flammable class. I've actually got some handouts I could give to you, which breaks down the classes, and that would be helpful. We never had Class 1A materials on site. Okay, so we had the 1Bs, 2s, and the lower classes. It just wasn't called out for in the land license. We did have permits for these, because that's the second layer, that land license is what allows you to store, it's cool from the town, to allow you to store flammable and combustible materials on site. But then for each tank or each area where you store drums, you need a permit, which is also issued through the town. So the only real increase is just these two new tanks that are coming in, the 22,000 gallon tank and the 10,000 gallon tank. So, I'll shut the house.
Yeah, Rich, you have the tanks situated, on the far side, on the...
They will be on the far side. I do have some drawings that I could show to you, that they will be on the north side, what we call our main manufacturing building. It's probably 400 yards from the property line, if I had to guess.
So it's on the east side?
It's on the north side.
On the east side.
East from you. Is it on the riverside, riverside? No.
Yes.
It's on the riverside. It's near the fire pond that we have on site, if you know where Mother's Brook is.
Yeah, is that going to, are you going to view, it's going to be on the riverside of the fire pond? Because the light, I see that you're putting new lights in now. Do you do any clearing to install the tanks?
No, the clearing's already taken place.
Okay.
Well, the other clearing that you've seen, we brought in a natural gas line to the site about a year ago.
Yeah, I see the lights now.
In case the news didn't get out, I know we had a big ribbon cutting ceremony a year ago. But we used to burn number 6 fuel oil at our site, and we switched to natural gas, which is much cleaner burning fuel. So...
Is the chief comfortable with this?
I am.
Well, thank you for coming. It's nice to have a audience that are interested in what's going on. ISP's been a good community partner. We want to continue that relationship, but certainly your questions are very important as you live right near the facility. Anything else, Howard?
Just on what, do you store natural gas on the premises?
No, we do not store it. It comes in a pipeline, and it's supplied through, whatever, the Nstar, is our supplier, but there is no storage of natural gas.
And is it separated from all these chemicals?
It is.
By geographical distance?
Yes, it actually comes in from the north side through, you've probably seen the clearing that you're mentioning, along that new south main street that's been shifted. You'll see another clearing to the side of that, and that's where we brought in our natural gas line. So it comes into the north side of the property, it crosses Mother's Brook, where our fire pond is, and then it heads south towards our boilerhouse, completely separate from any of your storage.
Are you satisfied with those responses? Are there any further questions about this? This is a, the ISP is a hearing, and they're here to respond, as is the fire chief. There is no further questions from the board? Then I'll undertake a motion.
Make a motion to approve ISP, Freetown Fine Chemical Incorporated for the application of a license as submitted to the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. No, you did. You did a great job. Thank you so much.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 6th to 13th.
Do I have a second?
All right.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the minutes of, what was it, March 11th? Or 6th, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Speak of a budget, the Monday, March 11th.
11.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Personnel board. Is there anything within Board of Health that you need to bring up?
Want to talk about pond levels?
I have that later in the agenda. I think we should.
We're waiting to wait.
Yeah, okay. So let's move on to personnel.
Okay, I need a motion to reappoint Lisa Jeffy, the animal control officer.
If I could just ask, conversations be carried on outside so we can continue the business of the meeting, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. It's clearly not the best acoustical situation in here. Okay, so I have a motion, but then...
Did I have a motion?
On, what were we looking for?
Lisa Jeff.
Oh. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Jared Darling, Assistant Animal Control Officer and Inspector of Animals?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor signify by aye.
Aye.
So I guess our new administrator is just, it would love to be the now pocket clerk at the same time, so I have a motion to appoint Alexandra Gulta as pocket clerk.
How much does it pay? I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And I have a letter here from the library trustees. There were 13 applications submitted that a position of library technician, the library trustee, and I reviewed all 13, not me, but Dorothy.
Yep.
All 13, and narrowed down field to six candidates. All six were interviewed, and then, by the three trustees and by Dorothy. At the end of the interview process, they narrowed the field down even smaller to three. So they're now submitting a name. Casey Hitzler.
Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint Casey Hitzler.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. Further discussion, they would like this person to come on board to start April 1st, 2013, and work with the current staff, and then stay on.
To transition, and they have the money budget.
Right, so you guys are all right with that?
I'm fine with that.
So we can include that in the motion to read that she will begin her tour to keep April 1st, 2013.
Okay.
Cheryl.
Cheryl, yep.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Also, to reappoint Richard Brown to the Surfing Commission and Joint Transportation Planning, do I have a motion?
Some more.
Do I have a second?
Well, he was paying, so we didn't get a reappointment. Second. I was just getting a wife's. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those with favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And I'm all set. There is one more thing on the agenda that is for executive staff.
Okay.
Turn it back for me.
Yeah, I got it. On our agenda next is borrowing and refinancing.
We discussed briefly at a joint board selectmen and finance committee meeting, a recommendation by our fiscal advisor, and you have that in front of you. And this is a twofold recommendation. The first is that we engage in a current refunding of 2003 school bonds. We were hoping when we originally initiated this activity that there would be a lump sum payment given to the town for this refunding, but that program has been eliminated. We are able to, without even the lump sum payment, save about $150,000 over a 10-year period. Since this was a debt exclusion, there'll be an immediate savings to our taxpayers. And the second item, and we want to do this all at one time, to take advantage of economies and scale, and that is to arrange permanent financing for our capital projects from storm damage, our three bridges, roads, and the associated projects, based upon the reimbursement we are receiving, as well as a $500,000 upfront allocation that the town made. We have about a $715,000 debt obligation that we are looking to finance over a 10-year period, based upon the numbers that we are projecting for our budget. This would be included within our current operating budget, would not be considered a debt exclusion, it would be within the tax rate that is set by the assessors and approved by the Board of Selectmen. There is a schedule for going about this work. Basically, we have to get all our information to the banks and to bond council at the beginning of April, and hopefully, we will be able to get this signed in June of 2013. And I think it's also important to point out that while Town Meeting approved a debt exclusion for the bridge projects, that number was so enormous at the time, because it was a planning number, there was no vote of the town taken at a general election to ratify that. And it looks like, based upon our management of project, as well as the reimbursements we're getting, we're able to do that without unduly burdening the taxpayers with a debt exclusion. So the only, I'm just presenting this and asking for approval to proceed as outlined in the schedule, and the recommendation from Unibank.
Unibank, right. Comments from the board?
No, it's a perfect question.
It is.
Same with taxpayers' money in the long run.
The schedule that we're talking about, is the GOV school refund, is that the one we're talking about? What schedule are we talking about here?
I think it was referred to as this schedule without what happened after the one.
If you're looking at money, you have to go to the GOV with school refund.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the one we're talking about, right?
Right.
I think that's, that's the way to do it.
Yep. I'll make a motion to move this forward.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, sitting by, just saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. We do want to discuss pond levels. Mr. Sadik, you had some time on it.
I think Rich has some stuff also. Why don't you go first?
Go ahead.
Do you have some information on pond levels?
I'm not sure that I have the most comprehensive information on pond levels. The only thing that I know is that I did have a discussion with the town manager in Middleborough. They have removed at least one of the wards. They are not convinced, from a water management point of view, that that will have an impact on our situation, but they are responding to complaints and concerns that our town residents had, and want to eliminate that as a concern that we might have when we're managing our water.
The only comment I have about the pond levels is that I kind of did the old-fashioned way, went over and moved it, the pond, put a mound on there two weeks ago on the wall ramp, and it has gone down. And if you look over, it's fringing on the land of the neighbors, the butter. It has gone down maybe an inch and a half over the last two weeks, so we're growing in the right direction. Just a minute.
My only comment is that one of the Middleborough Selectmen did reach out to me because this one neighbor had been sending us photos of how rapidly these water levels were encroaching on their property, and I put that Middleborough Selectmen in touch with that neighbor, and they went out together on Sunday to look at it with Rep. Schmidt. So I think what we were looking for was a token of goodwill on the part of the community, and I think the community, the town of Middleborough followed through. And to Mr. Sadik's point, it does look like it's had some impact on water levels, and what we need to hope for now is that we have reduced levels of precipitation. Yes, yes. So we are monitoring it. There's a plan in place, as you all know, a study that'll be completed in 2015. That doesn't help you in 2013, when your house is sitting there and this water's creeping up. So I think it's good that the communities are working together, and Kiko Arl also called me on it, and said the study was ongoing, but over the weekend, UMass sent somebody out to actually try to calculate the impact removing that one board would have on the overall water level. And I don't know what that data have, will reveal yet, because I haven't seen it, but I know that they went the next step, and I was pretty pleased with that. So, do you have any other comments, folks? We're watching it. The dates for upcoming board of selectmen meeting, Monday, April 8th, April 22nd, May 6th, and May 20th. The town election is April 1st. The polls are open in this school building from 12 to 8:00 PM. Old Business Water Department, Fall River, any updates on that? I don't see any water people here. You might.
No, but I did want to announce that we do have some sad news.
Yes.
One of our water commissioners, Mr. Walsh, passed away. And I believe the wake is Wednesday?
Wednesday. Yes.
And I talked to Mr. Millerolo, and he is getting in touch with not only the Westport folks on the issue... folks on the issue, but also the attorneys that we've allowed him to engage, and they're, they're moving it forward, but there's no significant progress, you know?
No, the tragic loss of Mr. Walsh just happened, and we were just notified, I think, today, this morning, about what the final arrangements are. Our Employee Handbook and Safety Committee updated?
The Handbook, I am reviewing a draft now and making edits, and I'm reaching out again to the head of the bargaining unit for Town Hall employees, and trying to schedule a date for the Safety Committee.
Okay, thank you. And then we just have, we have some minutes from the Council on Aging, minutes from the Friends of the Fall River, Freetown State Forest. Is there anything else? Oh, yes, I did. Really, very good news, we just got, we've been looking at, where are we gonna put senior housing in Freetown, because we don't have any. And we've been looking at the former Freetown Screw Site, which is on County Street, and we did receive $15,000 for a feasibility study, but we also, just through Mass Development, been awarded, what they're calling a grant through the Enhanced Expanded Use Program for 406, up to $460,000 for brownfields redevelopment fund. Unfortunately, the Freetown Screw Site is a brownfield, but it also offers tremendous potential for us to finally construct some senior housing, and we hope to move that forward very quickly. This, this, this is tremendous progress, and something that's been ongoing for a long time. So I did want to mention that, yes, thank you. Is there anything else, anyone who needs to mention?
Yes, we, there is something for the Personnel Board that was actually at the end of our ...
Oh, yeah.
Can we put that on the agenda for our next meeting?
Sure.
It's not on our agenda right now, and that needs to be discussed. Also, here's something here from Borrego Solar, asking us to look at our fees, evidently they think our fees are too high in the town of Freetown, and that's where the new solar array that's built on Briley Grove.
Yep.
Actually, we can look at it another way, we can say that maybe some of the other towns are too low, ours are just okay.
Well, I don't know.
That was a pretty steep pick.
That was a pretty steep pick, yeah.
But I'd like to have you investigate this a little bit further, and maybe bring it back to the Board at our next meeting.
Right, we, we didn't fall in the middle at all.
It was like, we, we don't know what the universe is.
We're not the same, we're on the second highest.
I think what we should do is, if we divide the system size into the cost, we can determine where we stand, because it's the same company installing it in the same type of system in all these different communities.
Yeah, one's $5,000.
I was going to ask for a little bit more time in the next meeting, because some of these fees are based on just an arbitrarily set number, some of them are based on the electrical permit, the percentage of that, some of them are based on kilowatt hours, so it may take just a little bit more.
Well, I just want to make sure, you know, when they're looking at this at work, we're here and apples to apples.
Exactly.
And if you need more time, then that's fine, can we put it onto Old Business and have it be done, have it be due, maybe the first meeting in May?
Yeah, I already had a conversation with the Borrego rep today, it was on a different item, but, you know, we've started the process. I'd also like to go beyond just this area, I want to see what some fees from the rest of the state are, and that may take a little bit longer, putting out a request through the Mass Municipal Association.
Did you go, find a chance and look into this?
I'm sorry, I don't see what form that is.
Is that her, 13?
I had, I had different hopes to make, I understand.
Yeah.
I did too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what that was, but I will tell you, we, we have referred the earlier request for attention from the Rail Division to the Department of Transportation, and I'm waiting to hear back. Basically, in order to set a speed limit other than what is allowed under Mass law, you've got to do a fairly expensive and extensive survey, and it's not just as simple as going in and lowering a speed limit, you've got to, you've, you've got one side that you want to do it, then do a request for proposals to get the engineering firms in, and those are fairly pricey. So I think what we can do is we can look for some additional support to ensure that we're complying with the speed laws, and people aren't being reckless in the area, but I'm not sure we can address what I think he asked for.
He's also asking about crosswalks, and we've had that come up, I know, at St. Barnard's, they've been looking for a crosswalk, and we addressed that with Chuck, and, you know, we, we haven't made much progress there. He said, yes, I can paint one, but...
It's not enforceable.
It's not enforceable. I don't, I would like us to let him know by written correspondence that we have looked into this, and, and explain why it's not something that we can just automatically post a sign, so we'll just formally respond to that. Oh, that was your topic, sorry. What about this?
Rosetta Blamebo.
Yeah.
Did you read this?
Yes.
Right. I just feel like this gentleman really needs an answer, and how we should formally, I mean, I haven't had time to really go through this and look at it, but what would be the response to him?
If I remember correctly, he came to one of our board meetings about a year ago, before he bought that property.
And he asked us.
He asked us if we were ever gonna pay the land vote, and we said, we didn't think so.
No.
But he bought the property, and now he wants us to pay the land vote. But there's an interesting history that Chuck has put together.
Yeah, he put the whole thing together, and it does, it's a lengthy history, back and forth on this with this gentleman, too, several times. His issue is unfortunately, more about the fact that it gets, it's super pothole, and everything else, so...
But it's, it's not.
Oh, he says it is.
We had our first complaint, I went down there.
Did you?
And Chuck has actually put down that reprocessed top.
Right.
There were no potholes. But anyway, this was submitted, and we went to a Town Meeting, this, this was put down.
I know. But I think that we should at least give this to him, so we will know where we stand.
This is a great history, right?
We need to give him an answer, I don't want him waiting, so, you know, he has his answer.
I think so. Yeah.
And this needs an answer, too.
Yeah.
The 13 Bullock?
Yeah, that does need, and you've already done some research on that, right?
I believe I have.
Yes, you have, and you talked about it.
Okay. Can you let us know, and report back at our next meeting about 13 Bullock?
Yeah. Yeah, we need a follow-up on that. Yes. Not a thing. Informational purposes only. So we're ready to go, I think, adjourned, ready to meet.
I think a motion to adjourn our regular board meeting, and to go into executive session, not to be open in open sessions for purposes of Personnel Contract.
Personnel Contract, I have a motion.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye, all members, Mrs. Pacheco.
Yes.
Mr. Sadek. Mrs. Fox, yes, we're now in executive session. Thank you.